The show it's 5:30. We'll call the City Council of Cresco, Iowa, July 1st, 2024, meeting to order. Roll call.
Carmen.
Present.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Tonight we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of the minutes from June 17th, 2024, approval of street closing permit for portions of North Elm Street for Ridiculous Day on July 18th, 2024, approval of street closing permit for portions of Elm Street for a fundraiser slash street dance on July 13th, 2024, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Melissa Foley, approval of the Class C retail alcohol license, LC, with outdoor service to Pub. 7 LLC DBA Pub. 7, approval of pay request number eight for $55,135.76 to Generation X Construction LLC for the Seventh Street Reconstruction Project.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen. Yes.
Staff reports, Public Works.
Uh, Street Department's been painting the, the streets, the parking spots, the handicap spots. Um, they're a little over half done. Um, they've got, I think they've got some, a bunch of yellow lines to paint yet and stuff, but they're working on the sidewalks today in, on North Elm with the no bicycles and things like that. Uh, they also started chip sealing. Um, they have been cutting quite a few trees down, boulevard trees down with, with a little help. They've probably got 15 to 20 down so far this year. And um, we've got some more to go as well. And Dean and I were talking this morning, we probably will have to chip out at the yard waste plant, um, before winter. So we're gonna uh, see where we need to be with that and, and um, and when that could start. Um, Water Department right now, there is a water leak out in the Webster addition in a yard. Um, it may be the one we've been looking for. So they're gonna probably dig that up Wednesday. And um, I think it's a stub line that goes to an empty lot. So we'll see what, what all goes on there. Um, the, the lead service line inventory, Nikki and I were talking about this, this morning too. Right now we've got uh, close to 600 people that have not responded. And we've got to have this turned in by October. So we'd like to have most of it done in September, um, if possible. And if the newspaper could by chance, um, make that the headline coming up. Um, cause we've got close to 600 to go with no responses. We've got a little over 200 unknowns. So we'll have to go in each, each of those probably and check. And then um, we've got quite a few businesses too. So um, we're gonna probably start meeting weekly on that. So we're all on the same page with it. And, and um, if we've got seven or 800 left to do, we're gonna have to do probably about 80 a week. So, or, or more. But um, Sewer Department, Mike's here to talk about some of that tonight. Um, and if we have any questions. And the last thing, 12th Avenue, we've been up, uh, we're gonna reshape that. Uh, the county's gonna help us with that. Um, probably won't happen this year. So I know they had a, they had a hundred and some roads wash over in that last storm a week ago. So they're kinda, they're kinda running and gunning too. So we'll probably work on that um, um, next spring. And get that done. We've got some work to do ahead of time and we'll do that this summer yet. But um, yeah, so that's, that's what I have right now.
Alright, thanks Steve.
Yep.
Police.
Um, for the month of June, some of the items that were kinda up were the accident calls. We had 11 of them. We had 37 animal calls, 25 hospital and medical assist calls, 18 welfare checks, which a lot of those might've led to hospital medical calls because they were just checking on welfare of somebody. Uh, traffic stops were at 112 last month, 47 citations issued. Uh, the fair was busy, but only one was a non-local. And then also Officer Rush attended some advanced OWI training at the end of the month.
Thanks Jim. Administration.
Last week I attended clerk school, so I'm playing a little bit of catch-up. Um, so for fiscal year 24 budget, we actually budgeted a $991,000 loss. We finished up the year with a profit of 629,000. Um, some of that was for projects that weren't completed. So there will be a budget amendment coming through with some projects that weren't finished. Um, but we actually received 321,000 more interest than we had originally budgeted. The auditors will be here the week of July 29th, and we're busy with paperwork for the aging equipment project and the state revolving fund.
Alright, thanks Nikki. Uh, this next section's for comments from the audience. It's pertaining to anything that's not listed out on the agenda.
You forgot committee updates.
Oh, hey, I skipped committee updates. Sorry, Dan. About committee updates first, and we'll circle back.
I was just gonna remind everybody that this Friday night, July 5th, is fireworks out at the country club and family fun night at Nature's Edge. And I think it starts at 4:30. And then also, the childcare centers received another $15,000 grant from the HOG program. And since they've started with that, with the childcare center program a year ago, there's 15 new staff members, and that is combined with Cresco, Alma, and Lime Springs. So it's good.
Great news. Any other committee updates?
Too early.
Alright, so now it's comments from the audience. If there are none, I do wanna recognize two employees for their years of service, Leighton Bor, who's been with us for one year at the Fitness Center, and Drew Zahaski, who's been with us in the Water Department for 18 years. Moving on to new business, item number one, review applications and, and Cresco Tourism Advisory Committee recommendations and award of hotel motel tax grants.
And so there are just two this year. I do believe you actually read them.
Alright, so we received two, uh, two requests, and the board recommends Norman Borlaug Harvest Fest. They're requesting $6,000. The committee scores this application favorably. Norman Borlaug Harvest Fest brings many people to town to enjoy the fest, stop in, shop in our stores, eat in our restaurants, our hotels, bed and breakfast, Airbnbs, and campgrounds are all full. The weekend of Harvest Fest, the committee recommends awarding $5,000. And then the second one that we received is the Cresco Country Club and Fireworks and Music. They're requesting $1,500. The committee scores this application favorably. Family Fun Nights bring in residents and visitors together, offering unique experiences in Cresco, and the committee recommends awarding $1,500.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Item number two, requests for sewer adjustment for water not entering the sanitary sewer system from Karen's staple camp.
And so that was a leak in their basement, and they have a dirt floor. This has been verified previously.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Roll call.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Buska. Yes.
Item number three, discuss airport runway project and possible motion to award grant.
Um, so previously we had awarded the low quote to DNM asphalt out of New Hampton, and he is unable to do the work or unwilling. Um, so we're just bringing it back to you guys to review the only other quote that we received, which was the Henry Seal Coating, and that was for 48,630. And this was a budgeted project as well.
For how much was it budgeted?
I believe it's 50,000.
So this is a little more than the other one was, huh?
It was more. But I mean, we also questioned that bid from the guy from New Hampton, too.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Hassan.
Item number four, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engagement agreement with Ailers and Cooley, Cooney PC for the Cresco wastewater treatment plant aged, uh, equipment replacement.
And this is, um, they review all of our, the project going forward, um, the bonding and, um, the contracts and whatnot.
So moved. Second. Go ahead.
Second.
Carmen.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Item number five, resolution ordering construction of the Cresco wastewater treatment plant age-related equipment replacement and fix, fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking of bids thereafter.
The public hearing will be August 5th at 5:30. Do you wanna say anything about the project?
Can you answer questions if you're ready? Can you give us just a brief rundown of that equipment that we're talking about?
So the equipment that we're looking at, um, would be the two spiral pumps at the wastewater plant. Uh, all three of the clarifiers, which would be the entire mechanism, uh, top to bottom. Sandblasting and repainting at the end. And a non-podable water system that we use for seal water for pumps and just for general maintenance and cleaning. Then we have also two control panels at two different lift stations in town, which will just update the controllers or get a little bit more modern stuff into it.
The new panels or just updating them?
I haven't gone through the quote yet. They should be able to utilize the panel itself and just retro and inside.
Okay.
What, the other lift stations are newer or what?
They're just, um, well, one, Webster's is actually one. But we did not have anything to do with that project when that got built. That was handed to the city after it was completed. So, um, that's just updating that one to make that, where you have flow backup system. Now that's a way more populated subdivision. Cause currently we only have one alarm system. This would just give us a redundant. And then the other would be the E slur station, and that one just has some age. Um, motor starters are, they're just starting to wear. It's just time for, and that also has only one system that runs on floats and does not run with, so if something happens with the floats, then it's in.
East is the one down by, kinda like Oxen Row?
Yes.
So what do these people do? Do they write the specs for all this?
Specs have already been written. Um, there was a, I think a 25% drawings, and then there was a 50, and then the 90%. Those all come through. I reviewed all of them working with WHKS. And then, so a lot of this, the first number was in the fore. What Ailers and Cooley, that's mainly just reviewing, I believe it is all the specs, looking at the contract, when it goes to bid, the bonding, the SRF. So much of the, it's more of a funding than a financial side.
The legal aspects of the contract, like nothing.
Just go through.
It's mostly because SRF is involved, right?
Well, we would have to do it, even if to do it, uh, genocidal.
If you go through with these updates and make these changes, where does that put us in our five, 10, 15-year program? I mean, once we get through this, what's gonna be the next thing staring us in the eyes?
Um, that ball will kinda be in the court of the DNI. So we're doing this to satisfy our nutrient reduction, what we had come up with as a strategy. And our argument or our statement was that the Cresco Sewer Department and Sewer Plant is running as effective as it can be for the aging equipment. So it's doing exactly what it was designed to do in 1985. Um, what we had explained was that a lot of the equipment is aging, and we need to spend more money and taking care of what we currently have instead of trying to continually dump treatment processes into this and try to get rid of more nitrogen and more phosphorus. So we're using this as an opportunity to upgrade our plant. You know, those clarifiers have been in operation since 1985. And to my knowledge, have not significantly been retouched except in 2018 when we sandblasted it. So seals and of course oil changes and all the regular maintenance, the things that we do, nothing significant. And this will be a significant rehabilitation. It'll take one down each time. The entire assembly will get cranked out of there. They ship it out. The big spur gear, which is maybe four feet around, that'll get re-machined, including the overhaul.
How long for this to, once we start this project, once we get to go ahead, what is, six months?
Hold on.
A year?
A year and a half for sure. Cause we can't afford to have one, more than one clarifier offline. Um, and it's gonna really depend on weather. If you get rings like we've had, it's almost impossible to take one off. Cause we just need that for treatment.
So we probably start this project, what, next spring, 2025?
I'm guessing most of your contractors are gonna be set, you know, have their, their work cut out for this year.
I think it's set to go up for bid, at least at the end of August, maybe?
Yeah, I was thinking September.
September, August, yeah.
And there are some projects that could possibly be done over the winter because we do have, the non-podable system is entirely in the basement. So that would just be new pumps, bladder tanks. Sounds easy, but there's a lot more to that. Uh, one thing I did forget to mention was the digester building. Um, those have been on the council for a while. That digester building has been on, um, I mean, this is going back to old Landmark days. We should probably do something with that. So finally, we're gonna get something done. That'll be a canopy structure. Uh, we just really couldn't afford to do a true building anymore with all the NFPA. Uh, we would have to do dehumidifiers and fans, and that would be just a maintenance, because the humidity and that, and that, that gas in there, just be, it would be awful. So it was better to just not enclose that thing entirely. We'll see how that goes.
So you just put a roof over it?
Be a roof and a little bit on the top side.
Like a canopy, you said?
We're gonna redo all the hand railing. Some of it is old from the seventies. Uh, that all needs to be replaced. Um, there'll be an access gate to set ladder down into when the access belt's done low. All the piping, all the headworks at the bottom, though, will get replaced. That'll be also a big project. There's three tanks in the digester building. And obviously depending on when we do this, in the spring or in the fall, right after our sledge hauling, would be the best opportunity.
Remember that building was one of the first things, when I first got on the council in 2010. And it was, and I was.
Yeah. And it was the, I know that was before that. It was just, it's the condition of that. The gases and the moisture, it just, it's too.
So this is separate than the south, the south side station there, brother?
Yes.
That's a different deal.
This was already in the works when we got hit with that.
Okay.
And that's in process as well. And if that's on.
Wait, um, no, no. So I'll make that motion. Second.
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks Mike.
Thanks Mike.
Item number six, resolution authorizing transfer of funds for fiscal year 2025.
This is just the annual transfers for that, for this current budget year.
Second.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Item number seven, discuss truck signage on Seventh Street West.
So I put this on the agenda because my understanding is the signs need to come down. Um, we did a motion to put them up. So I feel that we should do motions to come down if that's probably what we wanna go.
So that's the no truck signs though, right? That's what we're saying?
Okay.
Yeah. Well, they're down. So I mean, yeah, make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener. Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
But I wanna ask one question though. I mean, we're gonna keep the speed signs up though, right?
Yes, and they might not all be up yet, cause that's, the project's not completely closed. Um, and they took some down. There's, there's, and there, there might be more than just speed limit signs they gotta put back up yet. I don't know what's left to go up. And they being Generation X.
Okay. If our plans have gone awry on Seventh, what about Sixth? Were the, the signs that were there for years and years and years, are they gonna go back up?
I don't know if they can. Um, I guess we can, I can, we can see about that unless we wanna embargo it.
No, that might be a road that.
Right.
You'd better wait and be done with it.
Yeah. And that, that might be, I mean, embargoes everybody. Snowplows and everything, so.
Well, you just gotta wait for your snowplow and leave it at that.
Yeah, we can figure, we can see what that would be.
That would be from what, embargo from?
Six, three?
Feather light up?
Avenue West.
I guess we should discuss that.
Yeah.
Can add it to the next agenda if you wanna get some information?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess there's a lot of industry along Sixth, Seventh.
This is, this is, uh, east of all of that, though.
On the residential part. Yep.
Basically from Seventh Street West.
To Third, yeah.
Alright. Item number eight, set public hearing to amend Chapter 91.12 in the City of Cresco Court of Ordinances pertaining to water meters.
So the next item on the agenda is also the first reading of this ordinance. Um, the Water Department would like to change the ordinance. So, um, it's a little bit what we're looking for. To start eliminating some of the multifamily residential. We're getting a large number of ones that want five units and so, in each building. So then it'd be five meters. Um, they wanna reduce it down to one.
Cause right now the, some of the, some, a lot of the buildings in town, the apartment, apartment buildings with multiple units in them are, are that way. They have one meter and one bill, correct?
Yeah, that's kinda a mix of them, but yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
So just to clarify, what, I mean, we're pushing upper story housing. Do they get two meters? One for the business and one for the housing? I mean, because if I were a business person, I certainly would not want those two mixed.
So currently we, we do have a mix, but this would be kinda pushing a little bit more towards having just the one master meter for the whole building. Cause the issue we're running into is if somebody doesn't pay their bill, you can't shut off the whole building, right now.
Right. But what I'm saying is, this is talking about multifamily residential units. By definition, it doesn't include businesses. Because they're not residential units. So if I were, pick a name that I know has an apartment, if I were Cubix, do they get a meter for the apartment and a meter for the business?
I believe that's how most of them are right now, yes.
Is there anything in here that would keep that from happening? Um, I mean, I, now, if they have multiple residential units up, that's a whole other question, which I think is what this is trying to address. I'm just talking about separating the business out. And if there's any interpretation of this that would keep the business from having a separate meter.
And it's not spelled out in there, but we could change it.
So I mean, what do you say?
I mean, if they want it. Of course, if they don't want it, they can put it together, but.
Yeah, the business would have a meter and the apartments would have theirs. Cause that way if we were shutting the water off, you certainly wouldn't shut the business off.
That's what I'm concerned with. That's what I'm trying to separate out in my mind.
I would, now I understand what you're saying.
I don't know how many of those buildings would have more than one shut off at the street.
They would all have the one shut off.
Right.
So if the tenant was upstairs and not seeing the bill, we wouldn't be able to shut it off downstairs without shutting off the.
Business.
Business as well.
So right now, does the, does the business owner kinda have the choice that they can have one shut off? And they're responsible though, in that case, if the tenant doesn't pay the bill.
And a lot of them are pretty good at getting us in and getting us access. If we need to pull the meter due to non-payment, it's not an issue. But we have had some where they refuse to let us in and we had to get warrants to be let into.
So there's some where the tenant didn't pay the bill, and the, and the business owner won't let us in to shut.
Not necessarily business owner, but the landlord.
Landlord.
Yeah. Yeah.
A lot of them that have the multi-meters, they'll have its own shut off right before the meter. So the landlord would also have access to go in and just.
So down in the basement, there's multiple meters and a shut off for each one.
But that's behind our meters.
Right, right, yeah.
And in that case, if, if the tenant did not pay, the landlord would still, or the property owner would still be responsible. Yeah.
You and I were emailing back and forth about the Iowa law that says there is a lien exemption that the landlord can file.
Correct.
That, and, so it seems to me we need to, it says, however, the property owner shall still be responsible for payment on our accounts. Don't we have to say, the property owner shall still be responsible for payment on accounts unless a, whatever you call that has been filed? Because we can't override state law.
Right. And I believe this, this went to the city attorney on Friday, and you said the.
Yep.
Verified that this would be okay to do this. I don't know, I understand what you're saying too, so.
And we can update it to include that as well as clarify the commercial, commercial buildings with, front of the stairs.
The other thing I found unusual was in option numbers two, sorry, in option one and option two, it says who's responsible, um, for paying the bill, but in option three, it doesn't. I mean, the implication is that the payments are the responsibility of each tenant, right? And I, but I think we should make that clear.
Okay.
Cause yeah, ultimately in number three, if, if there were multiple curb stops and multiple dwelling or apartments, the property owner would still be liable if one of the tenants didn't pay.
Unless they fill out the lien exemption, correct?
Yeah.
So you're saying there's some, like rental units, that the building owner won't allow us access to the basement, or?
Correct. So then we're not able to turn them off.
So then we're shutting it off on the street then, right?
Currently we're not able to, no. That's what number, number two will clear that up. So then some of them are going three, four, or five months before they get evicted, and then we're able to just get it cleaned up.
This creates a lot of, a lot more headache and bookwork and redundancy for our people chasing back and forth.
That's fair to say.
I mean, it is better to have multi, multiple units, because then you get the minimum bill for each meter versus one, one meter.
Right, and you wouldn't really tell.
Right. And just to clarify, even if there's one meter, we get yard waste, recycling, garbage per unit.
Per, as long as we know how many units are up there.
Residential unit.
Yeah. Do they have the, let's say there's three units, they have three trash cans?
Yes, that's how we found out. A lot of them have multiple units, because we didn't realize that. We have three of them, and now that they have to start using the trash cans for the bins.
So what we're basically saying is you wanted something else added in here?
No, well, I did, but that was just an inquiry to make sure I understood. Because what you don't want is one meter, one garbage charge, and three apartments. what you don't want is one meter, one garbage charge, and three apartments worth of garbage.
Okay, yeah.
And some of them I know downtown do have dumpsters back there, so it's either dumpster or for each one. And that would go for commercial, too, so if you've got three units upstairs and the commercial downstairs, you've got four of the garbage cans.
Okay.
So some of them don't have four garbage cans, and just have a dumpster.
Right.
So is that Hawkeye's decision to do it that way?
That would be between them and the landlord, yeah. Whatever worked best for their location. And we would bill it either way, so either way, it doesn't affect us. Do you want me to make these changes and bring it back, then, for the first reading?
Yes, I think we can have a little more clarification, too.
Excuse me, I asked that question, Amy, you brought up the residential with the apartment house.
There is.
Commercial with the apartment upstairs, and we had bought ourselves a legacy building, still trying to figure out what we're doing. Are you saying on the commercial side, they could have two different meters?
I'm saying, I think the business should have the option to have a separate meter for, or the option to put them both on one meter. I just didn't wanna...
Myself, I just, having that on the market, now, I'm still not sure what we're gonna do with it, I mean, it'd be a different apartment upstairs, but we have, we're restricted to one meter, and downstairs, a microbrewery or something like that, uses a lot of water. Boy, that's hard to figure out, well, you know where the record's going, but...
And usually, if you call us up and say, hey, I've got multifamily, a five will be in, we can kind of at least give you kind of a ballpark of where it would be.
Just in, yeah.
Of course.
Hands tied on that aspect.
Right, I mean, there are options, you can have these things that clamp into your, your pipes, and your water usage off your phone, but, you know, people have whatever options they want. But yeah, I guess I'd like to see a three guys version. I mean, I can, I just think, just as a comment, that seems like not a very citizen-like response to say you can't come in and take care of this meter problem that we've got. I'm sorry, I'll just, that's enough.
So we'll come back to both of those.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Buska?
Yes.
Reener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.